It's running for the Carmel Clay School Board. My name is Melissa Bull Smith and it is my honor to serve as president of the Carmel Education Foundation. The foundation has organized this forum as we believe it is essential that all members of our community are invested in the leadership of our public school system, which is the cornerstone of our city. We are here with the candidates at Carmel High School following all social distancing guidelines. We welcome our audience from their prospective homes. The Carmel Clay School Board is comprised of five members, three that represent specific districts and two at-large members. This year's election is for the two at-large positions. Each school board member serves a four-year term. Those elected this November will begin their term January 2021. It is important to note that the school board has two distinct roles. The first is to set goals and to establish policies. The second is to recruit, hire, and evaluate the superintendent. In preparation for this forum, the foundation sought input from the community. We received 130 questions for consideration. As it is not feasible to respond to every question this evening, our planning committee reviewed each question and defined general themes representing these questions and pertaining to the roles of the board. Candidates have received these themes for preparation, but not any specific questions. We will be responding to any, we will not be responding to any additional questions this evening, but we will share content, contact information for each candidate at the conclusion of the forum. Of course, candidates are welcome to address any questions they were not able to answer on stage tonight through their own media platforms. Please note that Susan Chamberlain-Doss is no longer campaigning and will not be here Assisting us tonight is Tara Ashody and Peter Premison, CEF board members, who will be timing and assisting with the order of events. Chris Wheeler is managing our live stream and recording. It is now my pleasure to introduce Mr. Jack Russell, president and CEO of One Zone. Jack will serve as tonight's moderator and will briefly outline the procedure we will follow. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Melissa. And to the Carmel Education Foundation for hosting the forum this evening. Like the foundation, One Zone is committed to providing meaningful conversations about the future of the city of Carmel. Thank you to each of the candidates for choosing to run and to be part of the future. We look forward to hearing from your ideas, thoughts, and my goal tonight is to facilitate a conversation so our viewers can learn more about each of you and to be informed in their vote. In just a moment, we will hear video introductions from each of the candidates presented in alphabetical order. Candidates are also seated onstage in this order. For each topic, I will introduce a question and ask two or three people to respond to that question, or a slight variation of it. Candidates will have up to two minutes for their response. Each candidate will be asked the same number of questions and the determination of who responds to what question has been arbitrary. At the conclusion of the questions, candidates will have all, will have, they will all have 90 seconds to share their closing remarks. Prior to the start of the forum, candidates drew numbers to determine the order of these remarks. I now invite you to turn your attention to the introduction videos.
Hi, I'm Katie Browning. I'm currently the vice president of the Carmel Clay School Board, but more importantly, I'm the mom of a fourth and seventh grader. When my youngest was in kindergarten, I ran to serve you on the Carmel Clay School Board. And with your support, I was elected. I've been working hard ever since, and I'm so proud of the things that we've accomplished together. We have currently improved all the safety features in all of our buildings. We've added mental health services for our students, and we've had the largest teacher raise in over 10 years. And my fourth grader is really proud that we've also extended recess time. We have a lot more to do. And throughout this campaign, I have asked for your support while telling you more about me, including that my mom was a high school English teacher, my dad, a retired Air Force veteran who worked many years as a middle school custodian, and my child who has an IUPD. I share these personal details because I believe that having a balanced board with various backgrounds and life stages makes for a good school board. We don't know what the future will hold, but I will continue to listen, learn, and adapt to the needs of our students, families, and staff of Carmel Clay Schools. I will continue to do good, but the world can always use more of that. Please vote for Katie Browning for Carmel Clay School Board this November. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Beth Glenn, and I am running for Carmel Clay School Board. I have been a resident of Carmel for 18 years, and I love calling the city my home. I have been married for 16 years, and I have a daughter who is 15 who attends Carmel High School. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting from Ball State University. I have a law degree from Indiana University School of Law in Indianapolis, and also a master's of law from McGeorge University. I currently work at Elanco as an international tax director. I also have 10 years of experience as a managing director in a national team for a big four accounting firm. I am running for school board to bring my talents in education to the school district where my daughter attends, to maintain the high excellence of education so that we have citizens that are bright and well-rounded in the future. We must present all sides of an issue to our children and teach them to think for themselves and not tell them what to think or believe. It is more important to have free-thinking and objective students going out into the world instead of them having preconceived ideas based on opinions of certain educators. I believe we need to find a path forward to send our children back to school safely again without forfeiting the joy of socialization with unreasonable restrictions. This is the most important time of our students' lives. If elected, I will put the needs of our children first, as well as listen to the children and the parents. I would like to thank the Carmel Education Foundation for putting on this forum, and I look forward to earning your vote.
My name is Sam Harris, and I'm running for the Carmel Clay School Board. I put down roots in Carmel as a new homeowner and want our schools to be the best in the state for my neighbors and the family I hope to start here. I will prioritize three things during my term as your school board representative. First, collaboration. With over 16,000 students and nearly 100,000 residents, your school board needs to be available to you. That's why I will always seek to understand your position before making any decisions. Second, safety. The community recently passed a safety referendum, putting your tax dollars directly into our schools. As stewards of those dollars, the school board must ensure that every student receives an education in a safe and supportive environment. Mental illness is a pressing issue. We must expand safety initiatives and offer more mental health education and resources to students, families, and teachers. And finally, flexibility. The future is ever-changing. The world that your students will find after graduation, they look drastically different from today. The school board must be flexible and understand that our decisions can impact not just today's students, but also their futures. We must be willing to adapt and change to ensure every child's brightest future. I hope to have the privilege of receiving one of your votes. I'm energized and ready to work for you and your students.
Hi, I'm Benita Hutt, and I'm running for school board. I'm a proud 25-year teacher, and this is Prairie Trace Elementary. This is where I taught for 11 years. My husband Gary and I have been happily married for 28 years and were the proud parents of two young men, Connor and Kevin, both graduates of Carmel High School. We've captured so many incredible memories along the way, and I've deeply treasured my time spent with our students in the classrooms. It's been said that a teacher's job is never done, and that's why I'm excited to put my experience to work for you. I'm a local business owner, arts advocate, and in the past three years, I've been a community volunteer at All Things Carmel. This week, I'm excited to be serving dinner to our first responders as a member of the Carmel Lions Club. All signs point to a bright future for Carmel Clay Schools, and that's because we're all united around one common goal: creating a safe, nurturing environment where we're always there to support our kids. I'll be an active, engaged listener, and you'll always see me out and about, excited to share everything our community has to offer. This teacher says, "Hut, hut, go hounds." And vote for Benita Hutt on November 3rd.
Hi, I'm Louise Jackson, and I'm running for Carmel School Board. I've been a part of the Carmel community for seven years, and my family and I moved to Carmel because of the wonderful schools and the welcoming neighborhoods.
What we know about Louise is Louise is extremely passionate and committed when she makes up her mind to do something.
It's really been my pleasure to have her come into our lives and be a part of my kids' lives as well.
And I know that she will make a difference for Carmel Clay Schools and all of our students involved.
I look forward to her representing not only my family, but the community here in Carmel.
I would appreciate your support. I'd love it if you'd go to the polls and vote for me, Louise Jackson. The board's roles and responsibilities are to be advocates for our children first and for our teachers, and really to ensure consistency across the district. Board members should have the ability to listen well, have a unique perspective when they're at the table, and also bring innovative solutions so that when challenges come our way, we can meet them with solutions that really are going to get to the heart of the issue. My vision for education in this community is that we continue to have safe schools, we continue to reward teachers, continue to remain one of the top schools in Indiana. What's expected of me as a board member is to have an ear, to listen, but the needs of the children first and the needs of our greater school community.
Hi, I'm Paige Miller, and I'm running for the Carmel Clay School Board. I'm a 50-year resident of Carmel. My son attended Carmel Clay Schools, and I just retired after serving for 33 years in the classroom. One of the reasons I'm running for school board is for greater transparency and communication with the parents. We have programs going on in our schools that I believe parents should know exactly what's going on and be informed on how those programs affect their students. Something new I'd like to bring to the Carmel Clay Schools is more collaboration. Last fall, I had the opportunity to do a collaboration with high school students and fourth graders. Fourth graders were taught coding by their high school counterparts. I was able to see high school students become leaders and elementary students become excited learners. Not only is it important for students to have the opportunity to collaborate, but I also found it's very important for teachers to collaborate. We need to know what our students need to know by the time they get to high school so we can continue to build that firm foundation at all levels leading up to the high school. Becoming a school board member will allow me the opportunity to continue to work with students, parents, and teachers. That collaborative effort together is the trifecta that makes Carmel Clay Schools the success that it is. My name is Paige Miller, and I'd be honored to have your vote for Carmel Clay School Board.
Hi, I'm Tim Mayo, and I'm running for the Carmel Clay School Board. I'm a 25-year resident of the Carmel Clay School District. My wife Heather and I have two boys in the school system. We have Tommy, who's a nine-year-old fourth grader at Orchard Park. And he's a good student, and he runs track and cross-country. And Mikey, who's a 13-year-old eighth grader, and he's, plays basketball and tennis for Carmel Middle School. I have a master's degree in engineering from Purdue, and I spent four years on Carmel Plan Commission, which has really helped me in a knowledge of how Carmel is being residentially developed. I think this will be a big benefit to the school board. I think my experience in working with a board like that will be a real big benefit for me to fit in with the school board. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Ann Windexter. By way of background, you should know that I'm a longtime Carmel resident and a proud graduate of Carmel High School. I also graduated from Ball State University with a degree in business management and the IU McKinney School of Law. Throughout my legal career, I've been driven by a single goal: helping others. It is that same goal and also the desire to serve my community that led to my decision to file for school board. As your representative, I look forward to fighting to ensure that Carmel Clay Schools receives its fair share of school funding. I look forward to collaborating with administrators, teachers, and parents to identifying and removing barriers for student learning so that each child can continue on the path to academic success as critical thinkers. I believe that my background in training as a lawyer and mediator, in addition to the wealth of knowledge and experience that I've gained as a civic board member, will serve me well to be your representative on the Carmel Clay School Board, and I appreciate your vote.
Good to see you all and look forward to having a conversation with each and every one of you. As we get started today, our first question tonight will be for Benita, Katie, and Louise. What is the role, I apologize, Benita, you first. What is the role of the board in bridging the community?
Okay, I'm first. Our role, what is the role for the board in the community?
For the board in bridging the community.
In bridging the community. The board meetings are available to anybody, any part of the community. And this is live. And so, as much as we present ourselves as a board member to the community, the community can learn what we're doing as well. I've attended some of the board meetings even during COVID and have learned a lot of the procedures and how much work the board members actually need to do prior to the board meeting. But availing ourselves, and there's been things, information about the redistricting through Facebook and Twitter and through current, so that's how we communicate. And it's a two-way street, so the communication goes both ways. We listen and are available. Thanks.
Same question, what is the role of the board in bridging the community?
I think that definitely Carmel Clay Schools and in turn the school board are a vital part of our Carmel community. Not only do we welcome over 16,000 students through our doors, we are one of the largest employers in Hamilton County. We own property throughout Carmel, and so we're also stewards of all those different ways. And as the board, we're the overseer in the governance of all those different items. So we're really able to be able to be part of the community. Board members serve on various different areas, such as the Parks Board. I serve on the Carmel Redevelopment Commission. So we really have an opportunity to reach outside of our boardroom in order to make a good influence, not only for our staff and our students, but also for our community members who may not have children in our schools. So I think not only do we have opportunities for members to contact us through email, to visit our meetings, but we also are extending that hand and reaching out to people who may not necessarily come to such of those events.
Thank you. Louise, same question. What is the role of the board in bridging the community?
The role of the board in bridging the community is to collaborate and have the best interest of the community. No matter what side of Carmel you live on, you should feel as though we care about your buy-in, we are consistently getting your feedback, we are consistently giving you updates and communications, and being transparent with everything that we do to ensure that there's unity in the community around all of the decisions we're making. I believe my experience as a business leader and being a bridge to people that may have opposing views positions me well to ensure that the bridge exists in the community that is collaborative and communicative.
Thank you very much. For our second question, this will be for Sam, Paige, and Tim. How do you think the board should measure the superintendent's ability to keep staff accountable to the district's values, goals, and policies? Sam, we'll start with you.
Thanks, Jack. I firmly believe that the board as the, best way to say it is the boss of the superintendent, they have to ensure that they're communicating with the superintendent the guardrails of where he operates. So we know what the goals are for the district, we know what the values are. The superintendent also needs to know where and how he can operate. And I think as you ask him to hold staff accountable, hold teachers accountable, you want him to have that understanding, but to know that his administrators, the staff that he then hires, to work in our schools, connect with our students, that they also understand his role in that and understand what his guardrails are. So I think it's about that top-to-bottom communication, everyone from the board to the superintendent, to the principals, to even the teachers, to understand what the values are of Carmel Clay Schools and how they play a role in ensuring that we hold those accountable to everybody.
Thank you. Paige, same question. How do you, how do you think the board should measure the superintendent's ability to keep staff accountable to the district's values, goals, and policies?
I think evaluating the superintendent needs to be broad. I believe we should have input from his staff and from teachers. I believe that right now we have an amazing superintendent, Dr. Bearsford. I've worked with him as a teacher, as well as a CTA board member, and one of the things I am most proud with that he does is he communicates well with everyone. And that communication from the board to Dr. Bearsford or whoever is the superintendent is key to displaying what the goals are for the district and bringing everybody into that goal and bringing everybody accountable to those goals.
Thank you. Tim, how do you think the board should measure the superintendent's ability to keep staff accountable to the district's values, goals, and policies?
The superintendent, Dr. Bearsford, is one of the best people I've ever met. I sat down for an hour and a half with him and talked about his role in the school system. He is in charge of the schools. He is the CEO of the schools. The board is just the board of directors. He is the one that has the communication with the teachers, with the employees, and he is the one that is in charge of maintaining that. He is the one that does set some of the goals and with communication with the board, sets up those communications and the goals that are needed to be the number-one school in the state. So the board is important because they are there to assist and support the superintendent, and he is there to support and assist the teachers and the administrators and the employees.
Thank you. Our third question is in regards to the budget, and this will be for Beth and Ann. I'll start with Beth. Beth, what are your considerations for budget priorities?
So I would say that my considerations for budget priority is making sure that our schools are current, up-to-date with everything that they need. Maybe not exuberant, but everything that they need to have to have a successful, you know, academic career. I also think that, you know, our teachers need to get paid at a reasonable amount. I don't, you know, they don't need to be the top of the pay chart, but they also definitely don't need to be in the middle or the lower end because we want our school to maintain its excellence. And to maintain excellence, you have to have excellent teachers. So you might have to pay a little more to get those excellent teachers so they can have, you know, the time to get better, you know, to get more education, more, you know, go to better, you know, seminars so they can teach, you know, the way that we need them to teach. Also, I think that we have to look at our support staff, not just the teachers that are accredited, but, you know, custodians, teachers aides, counselors, everybody, and they need to be also paid a reasonable thing because they do live in Carmel. We want them to live in Carmel. We want their children to live in Carmel. So we need to make sure that they have a reasonable salary as well and benefits.
Thank you. Ann, same question. What are your considerations for budget priorities?
So my first consideration is making sure that we always evaluate what we need to spend and then what we want to spend. My second issue for budget consideration is making sure that we're always looking at and fighting that continual fight at the State House for our fair share of student funding. We are still not receiving the average per student funding, although in fairness, what we have been receiving for years has been increasing, and Carmel's come a long way. But those state funds go in the educational part of the budget. There's five components to the budget, and please, Jack, don't ask me all five because I won't remember them off the top of my head. But they go into that educational part, which pays for really important things like teachers' salaries and benefits and things for classrooms and supplies. And so we need to continually keep our eye on that issue and fight for our fair share. We've got two referendum, and if I'm not mistaken, one of the two referendums that we've had is for additional dollars in that area. We can't always ask for those dollars, and so we've got to continually look at that.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our fourth question, which is around equity. Equity assures that all students have access to resources they need. What are two recommendations you have to promote equity throughout the district? And these, this question will be to Katie, Tim, and Benita, but we'll start with Katie.
Sure. So one of the marvelous, and I consider a blessing that Carmel has, and as a public school, is that any student who resides in our district is welcome and open into our schools, regardless of your ability, your disability, where you come from, what you look like, what needs that you have. You are able to come and learn in our schools. And as a school district and in turn as a board, we have to make sure that we provide the assets and the, for our teachers and our staff to be able to educate all of those children. So we need to make sure that we provide that. One of the things is just that is for our teachers. We need to make sure that they have reasonable professional development in order to teach a myriad of situations and different students. We need to make sure that we're giving them the time to do that, that it's above and beyond what they're already spending so many hours taking care of. And then we also need to be able to give our administrators that leeway. I think that's something else, to be able to teach and to be, to collaborate with their teachers. And in order to do that, we need to have somebody who is over all of these different initiatives. So one of the things that the board was presented back in November of 2019 with our new strategic plan is to have somebody, a coordinator, who would be over all of these different great things that we're having, to make sure that we have the funding for it, to make sure that we have the resources for it. And so I do think that's one of the great things that we've done on the board, is to be able to provide that and to be able to work for a future that's better for all of our kids.
Thank you. Tim, what are two recommendations you have to promote equity throughout the district?
Okay. Carmel schools, like Katie said, is a very lucky school system. They promote equity and diversity in the classroom and, as I see it, need the teachers, the teachers have to have a standard curriculum that is available throughout the school system. I would like to see possibly Dr. Bearsford put together three teachers, maybe four teachers, to put together a curriculum that goes on from teachers, to put together a curriculum that goes on from sixth, seventh, eighth, and high school age kids so that when discussions are made in class, they're consistent. Consistency is the hallmark of Carmel Schools, and really, if you don't have the consistency, then you get kids that are confused. Like Katie, maybe have an administrator that looks over the equity and makes sure that the equity is consistent through each grade level. But I think to start with, there should be a curriculum that keeps the consistency for all those classes. Thanks.
Thank you. Benita, what are two recommendations you have to promote equity throughout the district?
My first recommendation would be the fact, I'm excited here that they're going to, can you hear me, hire a diversity, equity, and inclusive coordinator. There is an application that's closing October 30th, I saw. And so that's really good news to have someone who has their finger on the pulse of the whole school, of the whole system, to provide the resources and help and the information coming from one person and making sure that everyone is equally getting their help that they need. And my second one is, our recruitment of diverse faculty needs to be done. I know that in the high school alone, there's 264 educators teaching 25% of the minority population, yet minority educators represent less than 3% of the Carmel High School teachers. And so maybe to provide opportunities to interview this population, to represent, make sure everyone is represented equally. Thanks.
Thank you. The next question's around diversity, and this question is for Sam and for Beth. Sam, the concept of diversity encompasses acceptance and respect. It means understanding that each individual is unique and recognizing individual differences. What are two recommendations you have to promote diversity throughout Carmel Clay Schools?
Thanks. I appreciate that. I think first and foremost, the most important recommendation that we can provide to staff, to teachers, to our support staff, is that they need to be open and understanding with our students. Everyone that a student can come and cross paths with in Carmel Clay Schools can be an informal counselor or informal mentor to them. And if those individuals in our schools are not accepting and are not understanding of the struggles that students face with diversity, with inclusion, then we aren't creating a safe environment. The second recommendation would be that we need to expand those offerings and offer them to the community. We don't just need teachers and staff and fellow students to be open and understanding, but we need to promote that in our community. And we need to offer, just like we do the mental health trainings for parents, these diversity and equity sessions should be available to the community as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Beth, same question. What are two recommendations you have to promote diversity throughout Carmel Clay Schools?
So when I think of diversity, I might go a little bit broader. Being involved in international taxes, I work with people from all over the world, every country in the world, basically. I've traveled to many, many countries. And so diversity is being nice to shake hands with certain people, but to kiss, out of COVID, kiss on the cheeks of other certain people. And if you don't kiss their cheeks, they take offense to that. Things that we might say, they will take offense to, and we don't mean anything about it because that's how we would talk here. So when I think of diversity, I think of a wide spectrum of diversity. I love in the middle schools that they have classes on culture that they can take, and so they can learn about French culture, they can learn about Spanish culture, they can learn about different cultures because that's how we are going to be more accepting of different cultures. When I also think of diversity, I think that it's not just, yeah, we live in Carmel. Carmel's got its reputations for whatever reason, but there's also diversity in what kids can wear to school. Some may have the best designer clothes. Some may always have new clothes every day, every week, it seems. Other kids, they can't afford that. And yeah, we might not have that many, but we need to make sure that the schools are safe for everybody and that they're welcoming for everybody, all people, whether they're foreign, whether they're poor, whether they're rich, no matter what they are. So I think to help teachers be able to communicate to people that, they may be the first kids that's ever going to school, who really want to try, and they want to go to college, but they have no idea how to do it. They may be in a family that, for whatever reason, has struggled, and they don't know how to do it. And we need to help our teachers be able to relate to them, kind of like what Sam said. We need our teachers to be mentors, and the best mentors is to be able to relate to all students, not just a section of students.
Thank you both. Onto our next question here, which is around inclusion, and this question will be for Ann, Louise, and Paige. Inclusion is about ensuring that everyone, whatever their background or situation, is able to participate fully in all aspects of school. What are your two recommendations you have to promote inclusion for all school community members? And we'll start with Ann.
So again, part of that is communication, and part of it, I think, is modeling. And it starts at the top. I mean, we need, and I think we do have policies that are transparent, that all students are to be included and that we welcome all students. And so inclusion for all students is certainly to be expected. And going back to an earlier question that you asked, Jack, I mean, part of evaluating the superintendent would be to go to and listen to the teachers and to parents and to community resources and to see if it's happening or not, or whether we're getting suggestions or feedback that we need to be doing something different because we do have an inclusion problem. Because inclusion is something that absolutely should be an expectation for our district. All children should be welcome and have equal access and opportunity. And so as a part of that evaluation, as a part of that listening to the community, listening to partners out there that we have in the community, that you've heard different people talk about tonight, we should be mindful if we're hearing anything different.
Thank you. Louise, again, the question. What are two recommendations you have to promote inclusion for all school community members?
Two ideas I have to promote inclusion throughout our community. I am a very collaborative person, so I believe that once I'm a part of the board, I would partner with the superintendent and the board to look at the data around feedback on inclusion. I've been a part of a focus group and parent group with the superintendent already for about the last year, where I know we have the platform to look at data, review data, talk about some of the causes for the trends in the data. So I would continue reviewing data, getting data, and understanding what the feedback is from parents and teachers, to partner with the board in determining the best solutions moving forward. That'd be part of it. Also, I would partner with the superintendent and the board to review some of our policies around how we recruit talent. I want to ensure that the way that we are soliciting talent, promoting opportunities, is inclusive of all of the diversity that we seek to bring into this community around diversity of background, experience, cultures, and communication styles, introverts versus extroverts. I believe that the programming that we could pull together as a result of looking at this data and getting feedback could be more inclusive and ensure that all different backgrounds feel as though they are a valuable part of our community, and they have people representing them in leadership positions that value the differences that they bring. That's what I would do.
Perfect. Thank you. Paige, same question, which is, what are two recommendations you have to promote inclusion for all school community members?
I think the first idea I have is to take a look at our stakeholders. We've heard people talk about the parents, community members, but our number one stakeholders are our students. And I think one thing that's important with inclusion, it starts in the classroom, and it starts with a classroom teacher, and it's how those communities are set up. And by talking with students where they feel welcomed, where they feel included, we can get a lot of data from those kids. I think the other important part of the data is kids that don't feel inclusive, that don't feel like they're part of the group. And really getting to those kids, finding out why don't they feel that way versus those that do, why do they feel that way? When we look at those practices and what's happening at the school level, then we can bring in all of our stakeholders and then create ways to make everybody feel included. But I do believe it starts in the classroom with the teachers and also from the top down, how we are treated and how we treat other people.
Thank you very much. To our next question, this will be for Tim, Sam, and Katie. We'll start with Tim. What do you believe are top safety needs for students and staff?
The top safety need, I believe, is mental health. Mental health in schools is so overlooked. Orchard Park Elementary, I know, has a fine mental health official, but I'm not sure that if, how many schools she's in charge of. The mental health issues that a school has and a child has, as far as fitting in, once we get, we're getting back to inclusion type material. Mental health is such a requirement that we could always, always improve on. The safety issues of the school as far as promoting the school lockdown, school tornado drills and all that is pretty well defined and may or may not need any kind of adjustments. But I just feel that mental health, even mental health in the community, is a big thing that is needed in Carmel and in the state of Indiana, in my opinion. So I would like to see mental health being a top priority.
Thank you. Sam, same question. What do you believe are top safety needs for students and staff?
Thank you. As I mentioned in my video, I think safety is so critically important because the community is putting dollars into our schools to promote a safe environment for our students. And I agree with Tim. Mental health is so critical. I'm going to forget the statistic exactly, but about 40% of mental health will emerge before the age of 14. Those are students that are enrolled in Carmel Clay Schools today who will experience struggles with mental health. It's wonderful that we've already partnered with Ascension St. Vincent to offer in-school programs and resources for our students, but I think we have to go a step further. We need to make sure that we're having open conversations, that, as I mentioned, everyone has some informal mentor that they can speak to. And I'll talk a little bit about my experience as a student. When I was in middle school, my parents and I decided that I needed to skip a grade. And I went ahead and I found myself in a classroom with students who were older than me, who were more developed than me, and I struggled greatly as a student. I didn't have access to those resources. I found myself in and out of school if my education affected. So I know personally why mental health is so important, and it's just becoming more and more prevalent in our communities. We just need to put the time and the resources into those programs to make sure that we listen to the community who gave us their dollars to promote that in our schools.
Thank you very much. Katie, the same question. What do you believe are top safety needs for students and staff?
This is a topic that I am so incredibly excited about. When I ran almost four years ago, safety and mental health were at the top. I wanted this to get involved in Carmel Clay Schools. And thankfully, with the help of our community, we were able to pass one of the first safety referendums in the state of Indiana and start to implement some of those things, of having a highly trained school resource officer in our school, of upgrading our buildings so that they're more secure vestibles, of using kiosks to check in visitors and parents instead of our school secretaries, and bringing mental health services into our buildings, suicide prevention training for our staff and families, the Stop-It app, which allows two-way communication between students or staff members anonymously so that they can report things. We are one of the first in Hamilton County that are developing and testing a stop-up to sexual assault program that parents can sign their child up in their groups to be able to learn how to prevent such things as terrible things as sexual assault. I'm so incredibly proud of the hard work that we've done, but now we have to implement these things. And once we implement them, we need to evaluate them. We need to say, this is working, this is working great, this isn't working great, what do we need to change? And it takes the community, it takes our teachers, it takes our parents, and it takes our students to say, hey, I really like this, or hey, I think this would be a better thing to do. We're well on our way, we have great programs, but there's more things that we can do. We have the saying that Carmel Clay Schools is the best at getting better, and that's what we need to do. We need to keep improving, keep listening, keep changing, and adapting to the needs of our students and our families.
Thank you. For our next question will be around the pandemic. This will be for Paige, Benita, and Beth. The pandemic has changed the way we teach and learn. Going forward, how do you envision teaching and learning models evolving to best meet the needs of all students and teachers? And we'll start with Paige.
I was directly involved in the pandemic when we switched on March 13th was our last day with our students. To be very honest with you, I feel we were very ill-prepared at the elementary level to go online. We had created a Canvas page, but we had not been taught extensively how to use Canvas. And so at first, the directive was we were to be out and coming back the Monday after spring break. That did not happen, and we went online for the rest of the year. The directive was at that time that all of us had to have something posted to our Canvas page by 8:00 a.m., which took everybody off in a lot of different directions. Some of us chose to do Zoom learning. Some had three children at home and weren't unable to do that. Moving forward, I have spoken with a lot of my teacher friends. They have received some professional development. We do have some elementary curriculum because last March, there was no online elementary curriculum. Middle school and high school had a lot broader applications that they could get to. We did not in the elementary level. So moving forward and not knowing what this winter's going to bring, I feel like we need to be spending a majority of our professional development time making sure that all teachers are prepared if we have to switch over to a full online protocol for an unlimited amount of time.
Thank you. Benita, going forward, how do you envision teaching and learning models evolving to best meet the needs of all students and teachers?
I'm a personal fan of teaching in the classroom, and it's unfortunate. I can't imagine teaching kindergarten or first grade or second grade via Zoom. That would just be quite difficult. And a lot of, there's so much social learning in elementary school. It's easier for middle school moving forward with doing it if we had to do it online, but I'm such a I'm such a fan of being in the classroom, the teacher loving and developing the students where they are. And you can just get so much more when you're in the classroom and the affect. So moving forward, I would really like for the teachers to be in the classroom with the students because there's so much more to learn. But I understand how we need to use technology. And the teachers have done their very best and the parents have done their very best. And I feel like different programs have evolved because of this need. Did I answer your question?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Absolutely.
The most important thing is, is developing those relationships with those students because, I mean, that's the collaborative growth that happens.
Thank you. Beth, same question. Going forward, how do you envision teaching and learning models evolving to best meet the needs of all students and teachers?
So I'm with Bonita. I can't wait for the day that my daughter goes to school every single day, Monday through Friday. It's been, you know, she does the hybrid at the high school and it's okay. It's what we had to start out with, but it's not the best. It's very confusing for not just her, but for her friends, for our neighbors, for everybody. They are, there's more, you know, and then virtual is the same. They don't get their social interaction. That is a key. This is supposed to be the time of the lives for our kids where they, you know, shouldn't have to worry about a lot of things. And unfortunately, in today's day, they do. But they need, it's hard to have a mentor if you're virtual. It's hard to teach class if you have 30 kids and you're looking at a little picture and you're trying to teach them and get to know them and help them. I've been doing the knocking doors. I came across so many teachers who said, I'm so tired of hearing the schools say, you're going to get the same education virtually as you're in the in-person. They're like, that is not true. I cannot teach the same. You are not going to get the same education. We need to safely get our kids back to school. I understand that, you know, there might be families that are high-risk. There might be students that are high-risk. That's okay. We should have an option for virtual, just like we have an option for other, you know, families that have, you know, I wouldn't say high-risk special needs, but for other families that have disabilities. We should have that virtual to make sure we can get through this, you know, this pandemic or COVID-19. It was also about cases and, you know, cases has gone out the door because more and more people are getting done. And so hospitals are still good, ventilators are still good. Let's just try really hard to get our kids back to school. And they also need to be able to be uniform. If one class at, and I'm going to make up schools, at Smokey Road Elementary can be together and talk, but another class at Carmel High School has to wear their mask the whole time and cannot socialize, that's not fair either.
Perfect. Thank you. Our last question is for Louise, excuse me, Louise and Ann. Maybe not. There we go. Louise and Ann. We'll start with Louise. The question is, if the state of Indiana reduces funding to Carmel schools, how would you involve stakeholders in necessary decisions?
In reviewing where we are right now due to the pandemic, we are potentially subjecting ourselves to a deficit of 1.4, somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.4 to $2 billion loss in tax revenue going into next year. So I believe, you know, as a business leader, corporate executive, I know the value in being proactive, being proactive in reviewing forecasts so that we can determine the best steps to address what could be potentially on the horizon. So what I would do is partner with the board and the superintendent and his team to review the data around the spend and effectiveness of the programs we have in place, consider the feedback and input of our teachers and parents to understand if we have to make some adjustments, you know, it would be really tough, extremely tough, but it's a collaborative effort that needs to happen. So I would also consider the opportunities to realign funding. So, you know, one of the things that I'm very big on is innovation. And so, you know, the pandemic has brought some really tough things our way, but it's also an opportunity to innovate. And so I would partner with our board and superintendent's team to understand the opportunities to innovate so that we can address these types of things that come in the past via, or come in the, in the future using forecasting and data to make informed decisions. So at the heart of what I do, collaborate, forecast, prepare, and then that shows fiscal responsibility and sets us up for sustainability.
Thank you very much. Ann, the question, if the state of Indiana reduces funding to Carmel schools, how would you involve stakeholders in necessary decisions?
So that's a great question and it's a very serious question because that could happen. At this time that we're in and with the projected impacts at the state level, it could happen, which makes my earlier comments about, you know, our share of the per pupil funding even more important. But if the state reduces the funding, then that, remember which part of the budget that impacts, which becomes even more critical because that impacts the part of the budget that directly hits the classroom. And so you want to talk about stakeholders, well, you know, we need to talk to the community stakeholders. People move to this community because of the schools. We can't just ask the teachers to forego a salary this year or to take a 40% reduction because we got a 40% reduction from the state this year or a 10% reduction from the state this year. That's not going to work. But we're going to have to have some very serious discussions with stakeholders about what can happen. And we're going to have to think very creatively because if we want to keep Carmel the great place that it is, is going to take some stakeholder participation to help the schools to go forward to solve that problem. Can't educate those children in the classroom without those great teachers.
Thank you very much. Before we get to closing remarks, I want to thank all of you for participating tonight. And in my line of work, working with businesses both in Carmel and Fishers, I will tell you that in Carmel, with over 125 headquarters, the thing I hear consistently is that we moved our business, we had conversations about our business because of the schools. And so I want to thank all of you tonight for participating in this. We did draw numbers to determine in order who will do closing remarks, and I believe Sam, you drew first, so we'll let you go first.
Thank you. And again, thanks to the Carmel Education Foundation and One Zone for putting this event on. I'm glad to have had the opportunity to be here. I decided to submit my name for this election after reading an article from the Hamilton Reporter about the lack of community members stepping up to the plate. And we clearly answered that call by coming out in force. I decided to run for the school board purely on my innate desire to serve the community. I'm not going to go seek election to another office after this. I'm not here because I have a personal agenda. I just want these schools to be the best in the state because I put my roots here and one day my kids will go to school here. As the youngest candidate on stage, I probably am the one that most voters are skeptical about. So I want to give a little more about my background and my family. My mother was an educator, so I grew up in a home with a mom who really valued education. All of my siblings took a different path. I went to college and then got my graduate degree. My sister went to community college, then finished her degree at school. My third brother was a high school and now college athlete, and my youngest brother decided to go into skilled trades. I'm, I value public education and a lot of my life has been spent in the classroom. I am a product of teachers and staff who supported me and I'm here just to give back to the community, to say thank you and to make sure that the parents and my neighbors and my kids one day still get the best schools in the state.
Thank you very much. Next is Katie.
In 2016, I sent my youngest off to kindergarten and I knew that I wanted to be more involved. And most people joined the PTO, thank goodness, and I ran for school board. It has been a wild four years. We recruited, hired, and evaluated a superintendent. We've put forth policies. We've put forth two referendums to our community. We've implemented programs. We've stopped programs. We've made changes. We've evaluated. And then came COVID-19. We have no idea what the next four years are going to bring. I had no idea what the last four years were going to bring. But I'm ready and I'm willing to keep going. I'm willing to listen. I'm willing to adapt. I'm willing to say, Dr. Bearsford, wait, stop for just a second. We need to talk about this. And we have. We need to make sure that we're listening to our teachers, that we're giving them the compensation that they so rightly deserve. We gave the largest teacher raise in over 10 years while I've served. It's not enough. It's a good start, but we can do a lot more. We've implemented programs. I'm so proud of the things that we've done, but there's more. And I'm ready to do it. I'm ready to keep serving. I'm ready to keep listening. And I really appreciate the support and I appreciate your vote when you go to the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paige.
Hi, I am Paige Miller. I'm a 50-year Carmel resident. I moved to Carmel in 1970 and started Woodbrook the year it opened. I graduated from Carmel High School in 1983. I came back to Carmel and was fortunate enough to take a cheerleading coaching position in order to get a teaching position and started my teaching career in the fall of 87. Our son has attended Carmel High School, or Carmel Schools. He graduated in 2016. And last May, I retired after serving 33 years in the classroom. I decided to run for school board, number one, because I absolutely love Carmel. I love Carmel schools. I am a big fan. We do have an amazing superintendent. I've been through many superintendents in my 33 years and I do believe Dr. Bearsford is the real deal. He actually likes teachers and students and it's been a joy to work with him as a teacher. I decided to join the board because I wanted to take the impact that I've been able to have in the classroom in 33 years and extend that across the district. I also look forward to working with other board members to maintain our fantastic school system, to bring in some collaborative sessions with teachers K to 12. I believe we have 11 amazing elementary schools that build a firm foundation, three middle schools that sit on top of those, which lead us to the high school. I look forward to serving.
Thank you. Next is Louise.
Yes, I just want to again say thank you for the opportunity to be here. Tara, Peter, Jennifer, Jack, thank you for your hard work of getting us here. My background is in human resources. So I am in the business of developing people, developing children as a volunteer in classrooms and in the community. And I have a background that is working with global organizations in the tech service area and also in the healthcare industry. These organizations are global organizations. Currently on the board, we have a lawyer, we have a teacher, and we have a stellar community volunteer. I believe I bring a unique skill set, background, level of experience, and just a unique set of ideas. And so I feel as though Carmel, you know, we are amazing. We are best, we are the best school in Indiana. But because of my experience in global organizations, I will position us to be the best in the world. I think we have the opportunity to not only be the top-rated school in academics, but also the top-rated school in equity and inclusion. And my experience will help us go from best in Indiana to best in the world.
Thank you very much. Ann, your closing remarks.
I want to say thank you to the foundation and to One Zone for having us all here tonight and to everybody that's taking the time to watch this and learn more about all of us to make an informed decision when you cast your votes. Mrs. Miller, I actually graduated before you. I graduated in 1980. I'm proud to tell you that. My sister graduated from Carmel High School. My daughter graduated from Carmel High School. And I have three nephews, two of whom have already graduated and the last one will graduate this spring. My middle nephew is a first-year classroom teacher, not in this district, but he is a first-year classroom teacher. And I got to go help him set up his classroom. My daughter's in medical school and my oldest nephew is in finance. And I remember distinctly my middle nephew questioning whether he was really going to make as big of a mark as his older cousin and his older brother. And I told him, he had an opportunity to change the world, one child at a time. That's what our teachers do and that's what we all need to help happen. That's what I want to do if I am lucky enough, if I receive those votes, to be on the school board.
Thank you. Bonita, your closing remarks.
Well, we're all a great team, aren't we? We all work together. My diverse experience makes me a strong candidate. I taught for 25 years. I've taught in Louisville. I've taught at the Bureau of Jewish Education. I've taught in Carmel. And I've been a parent through Carmel students. And I've actually represented the PTO in Japan at the Japanese Exchange Program. And I am an active citizen in this community. I volunteer all things Carmel and Lions Club and Tutor. And I was also a choir mom and ambassador mom. So I'm involved. I'm vested. I love this community. And this is my way to represent the district. And this is my way of giving back to the community because this community offers so much. It gives me a chance.
Thank you very much. Tim, your closing remarks?
First off, Jack, you did a fantastic job tonight. I wanted to thank you. As a consultant, I work with school systems throughout the state. Currently, I'm working on buildings at Ocean, Huntington, Decatur County, and Clinton Central and Vincennes University. And one of the things that happened a year ago, I was on the roof of this building when I was looking at the explosion damage, trying to figure out how to get this repaired. And I looked at, this building is massive. I mean, this is a huge building. Carmel is building two elementary schools right now. And there's nobody on the board that I believe has a firm understanding of building construction and building technology. I haven't been able to find out whether the two buildings that are being built are going to be LEED certified. LEED certification means they're built with the highest technology and thermal efficiency. And I still haven't been able to find out about that. So I think the board needs somebody that has a grasp on building technologies. And that's why I signed up to run for the school board. I hope in the future that I'll be able to help Carmel in that way. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Beth, your closing remarks?
Um, yes. About two, maybe two and a half years ago, a couple of people asked me about running for school board. And I was just like, really? No. And then this summer, early this summer, I kept seeing things and hearing things that I just wanted to get involved in. I wanted to have a say. I wanted the students to have a say. I wanted the parents to have a say, as well as the teachers. And so I decided to run this past summer for this. I love school. I love learning. I still
I still love learning. I, I picked a career where I still have to have certified education for. Um, I want my daughter to love school. I want every kid to love school. I mean, yeah, you're going to have your subjects you don't like, but I, I, I loved learning, and that's what I, that's what I want every kid to have. Um, I, I believe that, you know, we all are a community. We all have something to give. I sometimes, you know, the other reason I got involved was I would fill out these surveys, and then I'd hear the end result, and I'd be like, that's not what I said. Um, and I would talk to other parents. I would talk to my neighbors, and they'd be like, that's not what I said. And so I just kind of got tired of the few who were the loudest, making all the decisions, it seemed like, for the majority, because nobody I talked to, that's not how they filled out the surveys. I want more transparency. I want the kids to have a voice. I want the parents to have a voice. I want to go out to neighborhoods and talk as if, if I'm lucky enough to become a school board member.
Thank you. And again, before I turn it over, I want to thank all of you for the conversation tonight, and I really appreciate it. And with that, I'll turn it back over.
And to One Zone and to all the candidates for being here tonight to participate in this conversation. Thank you also to the Carmel High School Technical Theater staff and student crew for producing this forum and to Carmel Clay Schools for their technical support. Tonight's program was organized by the Carmel Education Foundation. The mission of the foundation is to support all Carmel Clay students in academic achievement and lifelong learning. To do so, we invite grants, programming, and scholarships. As a nonprofit funding partner of Carmel Clay Schools, we believe in the fundamental essence of well-being and success of every child in our schools. We encourage you to be thoughtful, to be thoughtful with your goal as a school board plays an essential role in guiding the future of our city's public schools. You may have seen information about the Ghosted Cowboys Go. For the past 11 years, Ghosted Cowboys 5K, 2K race has been a primary fundraiser for our foundation. I need you to do the race this year. Our board appears and presents Ghosted Cowboys Go, complete with fun activities, costumes, and gatherings. Your registration or events donation is essential this year as we navigate a pandemic that directs fund rates and progress from 2021. Please visit ghostedcowboysgo.com to learn more. Lastly, I want to thank the CDF Board, directors, the dedicated volunteers representing wide range of Carmel businesses and organizations, as well as our schools, and I'm grateful about many of them here tonight. To close, the contact and media information from each of the candidates will be available on your screen momentarily. I encourage you to reach out for further questions. Thank you, and good night.